Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council Meeting for Wednesday, March 1st. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by East Hampton Media on Charter, Channel 193, and live streaming on their e-media website. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathering in hybrid on the executive order by Governor Baker extended to March 2023, which allowed us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and the public to remain muted until recognized by the city council president. Also, for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak time or the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara?
Tony Denham here, Salem Derby.
Present.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
J.P. Gazinski. Dave Muneer. Tom Peak.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Owen Zerr.
Here.
Please stand up for the pleasure of the House.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will take the motion to approve the minutes. That is going to be for the regular meeting, and for the executive session with the note of the executive session minutes is going to be sealed until being resolved by the city.
Second.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of both regular and executive sessions of February 15th.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstain? Any no? No? Motion passed.
I forgot how to say aye.
It's my first time doing this.
Of course.
Public speak time. This is the opportunity to address to the council regarding any topic is not listed on the public hearing. I will ask you to please state your name and address for the record. I will give you two minutes because there's a lot of people here, and we have a lot of stuff to do in our agenda. We have a lot of business to do. And please be respectful, and please just address your comments to the council. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Elizabeth Applequist, 15 Dragon Circle, and tonight I'm here as the president of the Emily Williston Library Board. I wanted to talk about a couple of things quickly. First of all, I want to make an announcement that I'm very excited to share with you. The library board has voted to change the name of the library. We're changing it from the Emily Williston Memorial Library and Museum to the East Hampton Public Library. And we also want to show respect for our founder, Emily Williston, so our museum will now be called the Emily Williston Local History Collection and Archives. And I wanted to share you briefly with some of our thoughts as to why we changed the name. Basically, because we're working more closely now with the city, we feel that it's important that we align our name with the city. We think the new name emphasizes our commitment to the community and our bigger role that we hope to play as a community as we grow. We also think that the name change will help increase recognition of our library and to avoid the confusion with the Williston Northampton School. It will also give us an opportunity to rebrand and launch a new marketing campaign, which can help us to increase our user base and raise awareness of our programs. It also reinforces our public accountability and our desire for complete transparency. And lastly, we're going to be updating our website, our logo, and marketing materials, and new messaging, so that'll be coming forward in the next few months. And also briefly, I wanted to address the $510,000 appropriation request for the library that the mayor has presented in your packets. We feel this is a really, really good first step in addressing the chronic underfunding issue, and it will allow the library to provide services as defined in the contract of services while pursuing the wonderful building opportunity that has been given to us by East Hampton Savings Bank. And it also speaks very much to the city's commitment to make sure our library stays open and providing the services that our community wants and needs. So I, in advance, thank you all for your thorough consideration of the mayor's request.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chuck McCullough, 42 Ashley Circle, and I'm here tonight speaking in support and in my work with the Emily Williston Library, now the East Hampton Public Library. I'm helping them with the financial analysis, and I just wanted to give the city council an update on the work that we're doing. Given some of the information and the collaborative nature of the work that we've been able to see from the city, we've been able to update our financial model. And I wanted to just provide this insight to the city council that this is great work and great collaboration, certainly the adjustment, the consideration for the $510,000 as a tool to be able to use as we consider making the library more viable financially, but also as we consider the opportunity that we have before us with the new location presented to us with a gift from the East Hampton Savings Bank. These are great steps. We still have some challenges to face, and I think continued consideration on the part of the city council with some of these changes that are being suggested, in this case, the $510,000, as well as possibly increasing the funding in the budget so that we can consider moving ahead with this action with the East Hampton Savings Bank, I think will be a great step. I commend the city efforts to this point. It's been great to be able to put some of those items into the financial model that we can share with the city council at some later point. Timetable-wise, we just want to emphasize to everyone that we do need to think about East Hampton Savings Bank's generosity, and that we try to move expeditiously in trying to make some of these decisions so that we can tell them that we can act on this. And we just wanted not have that linger too much. So just wanted to pass that on to give you that update. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the... I saw people online waiting. I'm just going to allow the people in person first, and then I'll move into the people that are participating remote.
Hello. My name is Joan Kurtz. I live at 359 Main Street. I'm the president of the Friends of East Hampton Dog Park. I'm here tonight to again ask for your support to building a dog park here, like I was last year on March 6th, asking then for your support. But at this juncture, Nanatac Park seems to be the most logical choice for our dog park. Since last March, the board of the Friends of East Hampton Dog Park had looked at multiple locations throughout the city. Sadly, these sites have issues of concern, such as a possible contaminated soil, too close to residences, or no infrastructure, such as water or electricity. Here are reasons why we chose Nanatac Park as our ideal spot. Initially, we were told by Parks and Rec that the area we wanted in the park had an endangered flower, and therefore we could not build on that site. The lady slipper flower that was found in that area is not endangered. It is not threatened or special concern for the Massachusetts Endangered Species Act. It is a common pink lady slipper. Another reason, a dog park in Nanatac would be greatly funded, well, entirely funded by the Stanton Foundation at Nanatac, because it already has the infrastructure. It has the electricity, and it has the water. The dog park will enhance the section of Nanatac... A dog park will enhance the section of Nanatac that has been the site of an underutilized area and abandoned all playgrounds. It will generate more revenue for Nanatac through new park membership, which cannot be done if the dog park is located somewhere else. And lastly, there are no residential neighborhoods for people to complain about possible noise. So our residents already walk their dog all year round at Nanatac, and in the winter, when the roads are closed, they will still walk their dog, but now they can walk them inside of Nanatac Park, Dog Park. So please, when you hear residents talking about building a dog park in East Hampton, please let it be in Nanatac Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, city councilors. My name's Melissa Incampo. I'm at 41 South Street here in East Hampton, and I'm here to support these remarks by Joan Kurtz and advocate for a dog park to be built in Nanatac Park. We are seeking funding from the Stand Foundation, so this project would be of no cost to the city. And as we consider that funding criteria and how to align our project favorably, we believe Nanatac is the most sensible location for the dog park for many reasons that you're hearing tonight. On behalf of my dog Potter, I want to find a place for him to run, to play ball. I'm a little league family, so we're not going on any... In any dog... I'm sorry, we're not going in any baseball fields. We're staying in Nanatac Park, and we want to run in an enclosed space that is designated for dogs and dog owners. I want to repeat the mission of the Friends of the East Hampton Dog Park. It's to build and operate an off-leash dog park where dogs and their owners and friends have a safe, well-maintained area for recreation and socialization. Many people enjoy Nanatac with their dogs on leash. We feel it is time to designate an enclosed space for off-leash recreation and socialization. Thank you again for your time. I hope you truly consider a space in Nanatac for this purpose.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Marie Forney Page, a lifelong resident of East Hampton and have just moved back to Charles Street where I grew up. I'm here in support of a dog park. In full disclosure, I am the treasurer of the Friends of East Hampton Dog Park Committee, and have just finished my part-time job for the Parks and Recreation Department. I'm here independently and in no way speaking for either of those bodies. Sadly, I've recently seen increasing resistance by the Parks Department for anything new in their park. Offers to us have been scraps of fringe locations that upon investigations are less than subpar for humans or animals. It's my opinion that this stance is related to strong comments against any dog park in East Hampton from the mayor of this city. With all of the wonderful improvements happening in our city, it's shameful that as a lifelong resident and supporter of East Hampton, I do not feel confident in some of the people who have taken oaths to work for the best interest of our community. But I know I can always count on one thing this time of year, the census and with it, registration of my dog with a check to the city. Why? What's the purpose? To build statistics? To report to the state? Because it feels like maybe just to collect fees from dog owners. I've done it for years now, and will continue to do it, but it seems like any regard for our canine friends stops with collected fees and data filed in a drawer somewhere. I'm asking you to seriously consider supporting a dog park inside Nanatac Park for our four-legged residents who are just as much a part of our East Hampton community and just as much entitled to enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dorian McCarthy. I moved to East Hampton 17 years ago, and I love the city. I raised my 13-year-old son here. I started by bringing him to the community center in town, which is a wonderful place that I met a lot of parents who were in the same boat I was with my son, toddler, and infancy. And then we grew up together, making playdates together. They're still friends together, and we still do things together. I feel like the dog park would add another way community can get together with like... With their likes. Well, with my son, it was a human baby. Now it's with my fur baby. Currently, I take my dog to Agawam Dog Park. I would do it more often if it was closer. I would appreciate something in this area. Nanatac is a perfect place. It has the amenities to do it. It's a beautiful location. I take my dog there right now on leash. It'd be nice to be able to meet other people in the community that have the same likes in dogs and make more connections within the community. So I mentioned the part about my son is because I feel like a dog park is not only for dogs and socialization. I feel like it's getting the community together. It's a place where people can make other connections with other people with their pets. And I hope you could consider our plea, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Holly Allen, and I live... I've lived in East Hampton for five years. I live on Adams Street. I love our little town, and I would never leave it if that was an option. I do my grocery shopping at Biggie's. I go to the mill buildings for my shopping, my New City, ABB. I like to get takeout from all the lovely restaurants we have. I have even found a doctor's office in town. It seems like the only thing I can't do right now is let my dog have an off-leash run around with her friends. Adding a dog park to East Hampton would help grow a feeling of community among dog owners and make East Hampton the place to be. I want to stop outsourcing our dog parks and put one in Nanatac. I think it's a great location and would be happy to see one there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lynn Troy from 359 Main Street. I'm new in the area, and I'm delighted with the town. I have a dog, and those of you who have dogs know that a tired dog is a good dog. And so having the opportunity to run free and play until she's tired would please me and I'm sure her. Thank you. I support everything that's been said so far. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ann Chase from 3159 Main Street, 8B. And I'm Lynn's partner and share her dog, and I just like to give support to everything that's been said here. That area looks to us in our walks through Nanatac is just an absolutely perfect place for the park. It's not used. It's a little bit out of the way. It's nicely shaded. It's got so much going for it, and I hope that we can find our way to having a nice dog park there for the dogs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sandy Kurtz, 359 Main Street. Nanatac Park, I understand, has some 200 acres. We are seeking maybe an acre and a half for the dog park. What I've seen the last year and a half as my wife is the chair, there's a lot of resistance from Parks and Recreation to any site, as though Parks and Recreation has a proprietary ownership rather than the residents of Nanatac. It's a good location. There doesn't seem to be any problems except the resistance from Parks and Recreation, really driven by John Mason. And we don't understand why there is this resistance. It seems that coffee shops, residential buildings can get approval in a lot less time than the year and a half that we've been trying to get this location. So I thank you all for your consideration and your time.
Thank you. Now I'm going to the people who are participating remote, and I will apologize if I mispronounce your name. Katia?
Hi, I'm Katia Shapiro. I'm at 14 River Valley Way. I'm also the director of the East Hampton Library. Welcome to the East Hampton Public Library. And welcome to my glamorous office. I want to speak in support of the accommodations that Elizabeth and Chuck shared, and I want to say that we at the library are just completely overwhelmed by the outpouring of support since the last time we spoke at council meeting, from both city operatives at all levels and from the public. And I've asked... I'm sorry, I can't be there in person. I'm running a program, but I've asked Elizabeth to share a bundle of letters of support and Facebook comments about why people love their library so very much. But I have to say that I have just been flattered and flattened by the outpouring of support. People have offered to help us with fundraising, have offered to connect us to everyone that we need to know, have offered to just do everything possible to make this happen for the city, and we're working very hard to do so. And I truly appreciate the support of council and of the community in this endeavor. So thank you, and the library is working very hard to be the best partner we can be in this process.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I live at 5 Wildwood Lane in Goshen, Massachusetts. However, I frequent East Hampton, and my husband's an essential worker who serves in Hampden County, Hampshire County, Franklin County. So I am the COVID Justice Leader for Marked by COVID. We are a nonprofit grassroots organization. We are leading the national movement for pandemic justice and remembrance, and we're founded by and for those most harmed. We promote health equity and pandemic prevention, and all of us are volunteers. I'm a working-class, disabled, immune-compromised person with an essential working husband that I mentioned, and I'm also someone who's COVID bereaved. The pandemic continues to impact my family, as well as over 24,000 families in Massachusetts with the lives that we've lost in the Bay State. We introduced a resolution with Representatives Dome and Belay, HD 3821, and it calls for the first Monday in March to be a day of remembrance for COVID in Massachusetts, and it's mirrored at a federal level by legislation introduced by Senators Warren and Markey, calling for a COVID Memorial Day. Additionally, over 180 cities in over 36 states have enacted COVID Memorial Day resolutions of their own. We see this day as a day to unite, as COVID has impacted everyone. We also see it as a day to extend gratitude to our frontline and essential workers who continue to carry the weight of the community, and we hope that you will help us all remember. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Samantha Pliska. I live at 6 Charity Court in East Hampton, Massachusetts. I am on this meeting tonight in opposition of a dog park in Nanatac Park. I am very much for a dog park. We have two sites that are going through right now on Oliver Street and Ferry Street. For some reason, they... People have been told that they're not viable options, but they are. Nanatac Park is not a good location. It's centralized, which is great, but also the problem. Half the year, the park is closed. So if you can walk, that's great, but if you need assistance or are disabled in any way, you can't drive your car into the park and park near the dog park, essentially. The amount of kids during the summer, during summer camp, the pavilion rentals, the music, there's so many people in the park that I don't think it's a conducive site or a safe site for a dog park. You get one excited dog who's not on his leash yet, and goes running into a crowd of kids, and you don't know what you're going to get. And I just wanted to say because, you know, and obviously, if you don't know, that I do work for the Parks Department, and I hear a lot of opposition to it as far as people do want to have a park there, but I feel like it's important for other people to push the sites that are available, and so we can work on the improvements that we already have ready for Nanatac Park going. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Shelby Lee?
Hi, I'm Shelby Lee. I'm a resident of District 3 in East Hampton. Again, I want to offer my support for the needs of the library. Also, as someone with a science degree in ecology, I just want to say that Nanatac Park is a wetland area. It has a very fragile ecology system, and that system is becoming more fragile, especially as we see more drought. There are very sensitive species of plants and organisms in that environment. So any project that the city considers doing in that area, they need to do from a place that's informed with people that understand well the impact of the ecology in that area and how it's being affected just by the changes in our climate, as well as how it will be affected by any changes we make as a town, as a city, as we manage that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelby. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will take a motion to open the public hearing.
I move to open the public hearings.
Second. We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those... All in favor?
Can you hear me?
Oh.
What? I'm sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We have a motion and a second to open a public hearing. Councilor Rist?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a number of Department of Public Works appropriations that are on the agenda this evening. They were all approved by the Finance Committee unanimously. They are all important and rather straightforward. The first one is a $60,000 request for new water meters. We change our water meters every year. Some of them are needing a replacement. You don't want to hear about the water meters.
If they don't.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you all hear me?
I'm sorry, but you're not allowed to talk.
Okay.
Sorry. Sorry, but we have...
I was trying to call in to support the dog park and the library.
I'm sorry. You're not allowed to talk at this moment. Councilor Rist?
So the water meters in question, there's a... We replace 250 water meters each year. They cost approximately $250. They are radio style. There are still some older in-home meters that have to be replaced. One of the things that's important to understand is by the replacement of these newer water meters, we'll get a much more accurate sense of how much water is being used, which is very important to the fair water rate issue to our residents. So we've done this every year, and the Finance Committee approved it three to zero. Greg Nodlman, our DPW director, is here if you have any questions.
I'm sorry. I don't know if the people from home, they can hear us now. Katia, can you hear us? No. Hi, can we solve that? Just one second, because we're supposed to fix this.
Is it East Hampton Media?
I don't know what it is.
Sorry, Greg.
That's fine.
Just one second, Greg.
I'm pretty sure I didn't touch anything, but I did.
Greg, step back.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Was it the one that says all muted?
I already clicked.
Maybe Caitlin could help us. Caitlin, can you hear us?
Well, it looks like on the screen we're muted.
Well, that particular...
Yeah, but that was... That's fine.
Oh, okay. I mean, if you put this... I don't want to do that.
No, because this is just to allow people to... I mean, we have a chrom here. I'm just trying to be...
If you go into the microphone settings, maybe they're off or something?
I didn't touch anything, so...
Can't find them?
You know what? I don't know what it is. We have a chrom here. We're going to continue with the meeting.
Okay.
I apologize with the people who are participating remote.
So they can't hear?
And that's the main reason we have a chrom here in case something like this happens.
Are you all able to hear me now?
I can hear her.
Yes, I can hear you, but you're not allowed to talk. Sorry. Can you hear us?
I'm sorry. This is the second city council meeting. I've tried to join virtually, and the first time I wasn't... They never accepted me into the meeting. And then this time, when I tried to speak virtually, I got cut off again, so I'm not sure...
No.
I'm not allowed to speak?
No one called you up because you have the computer in front of me, and I have the clerk next to me, and I... No one kicked you out of the room.
Can she hear us?
She can't hear you, I don't think.
I can hear you now.
Oh, okay, good.
I'm saying I was kicked out on the previous city council meeting.
I apologize. We have rules, and we have to follow the rules. We're now in the middle of the public hearing about some appropriations, and we have to keep continuing with that. So I really apologize about that. I'm really sorry about that you couldn't participate, but...
Are you able to just make a quick record that I've called... Tried to call into two city council meetings to support both the library and the dog park and haven't been able to speak?
It's on the record. You already say it.
I'll put her name as supporting both of us.
Yes, please. Can you please put Lauren Styes calling to support the dog?
I will.
Please continue with the public hearing.
So I've concluded, and I asked the councilors if they...
That was for the $60,000.
Yeah.
Any councilor have any questions about the provision of $60,000?
Just that we're doing one of the... One by one.
One by one.
Okay, perfect.
No councilor have any questions? Anyone from the public have any comment or question about this appropriation of the $60,000 to purchase water meters? Anyone from remote want to participate in this appropriation? Seeing none, Counselor Rist?
I move that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation of $60,000 to be transferred from enterprise retained earnings to be transferred to the FY23 water meters account, $60,000. The Water Division replaces approximately 250 water meters annually. Cost per meter varies based on size and type. A standard residential sized meter with integrated radio reading capability is approximately $250. Need a second.
We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $60,000 to purchase water meters. Any further discussion? For those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? No, motion passes.
The next item is a $78,000 appropriation, also from enterprise retained earnings, for the FY23 Union Street Sewer Repair, the appropriation, the cost of emergency sewer line replacement located at Pace and Avenue. This occurred when they took down Harry Scurry Building, and they discovered that the sewer line needed replacement. I'm correct on that?
That was part of it.
Yeah. Why don't you, why don't you help me out, since my notes are terrible?
We didn't have great records for the sewer line, and we discovered it as part of the preparations for the demolition of that building and our actual prepara, our preparations for the construction to actually start for Union Street, and found that it ran directly underneath the former structure, which was Harry Scurry. And with the property owner's new plans to build, build a new building there, we need to, we can't have the municipal sewer underneath the building. We moved it, so it'll be in an alleyway, and we'll be working on getting an easement from the owner going forward, but. There was very poor plans and no actual recorded easement for that to cross their property.
It's an 1897 water.
It was 1897 clay tiles.
So, it's been around?
Yep.
Any councilor have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Counselor Wright?
So, you know, I, admittedly, I'm always not very good with numbers when it comes to the city's business. So, was the total cost of this replacement $78,068.34? So, you didn't have to, like, deplete any other funds first before using this?
We used some funding that we had available in the Sewer Department operating budget that I need to put back.
Okay.
So, we'll do that occasionally. There was some delay this year in being able to go for appropriations, so that's why we did it the way we did. It had to get done, so.
Yep, right, perfect, okay, thank you.
Any other councilor? Anyone from the public have any comment or questions about these appropriations? Seeing none, Counselor Rist?
I move the full council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $78,068.34 to be transferred from enterprise retained earnings, $78,068.34, to be transferred to the FY23 Union Street Sewer Repair Account, $78,068.34, provide funding to cover the cost of an emergency sewer line replacement and relocation between Pace and Avenue and Union Street.
We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $78,068.34 with $0.34 for emergency sewer line replacement and relocation in Union Street and Pace and Avenue. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against or abstaining? Seeing none, motion passes. Counselor Rist?
The next one is $120,000 capital stabilization request for two FY23 Ford F-350 pickup trucks. These trucks are medium duty trucks. She put a snowplow on them, and I know we have an ordinance regarding the possibility of hybrid or greed vehicles. Unfortunately, these vehicles do not exist in the electric level, and we must put performance and operational capability ahead of that. One thing that was said, I think by the mayor at the meeting, which is interesting, these are replacing a 94, for instance, and a 2007 truck with a modern truck. Now, when we go to maybe replace these trucks in the future or other trucks, these trucks will be more valuable because they're newer. So, we'll be able to replace them with maybe electric vehicles in, in the, in the future. But for now, we can't do that, and we have fast delivery with these trucks. That's important, because, you know, it snows at the inopportune times. Anyway, we, we did approve this three to zero, and since this is a stabilization vote, we need six votes to pass it. So, I just wanted to put that out there from a charter perspective.
Any councilor have any questions about these approaches? Anyone from the public have any questions or comments about these appropriations? Seeing none, Counselor Rist?
I move that the city council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is of $120,000 to be transferred from capital stabilization, $120,000, to be transferred to the FY23 Ford F-350 truck account, $120,000, to fund the replacement of two trucks in the Highway Division that are over 15 years old.
We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $120,000 to purchase two trucks for the Highway Division. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against it or abstained? Seeing none, motion passes. Counselor Rist?
We have an old bill of $4,701.68 from Morton Salt for fiscal year '22, snow and ice. They had trouble with their invoicing. We got the invoice just this, after FY22 closed, so we have to pay it. If we don't pay it, they won't give us any salt, and we kind of need it, so. It's an old bill, but we pay it now, using our funds now, even though it wasn't budgeted. That's why we have to do free cash.
Any councilor have any questions? Seeing none. Mr. Knutman, do you want to explain why this is happening, or?
Well, from what I've been told, it's affected several cities and towns in Massachusetts, Morton's billing, problem that they had, that they just, there was a bunch of bills they didn't send out that they were supposed to, and unfortunately, this is the process we have to go through to pay it. It was, it was no fault of any of our staff or anyone in our, in our department or anyone in City Hall at all, it just more, just didn't generate an invoice. They sent every other one except for number 5402474770, so.
I was gonna say, it's a lot more than $4,000 for salt.
Well, we spend a lot more every year than $4,000 on salt, so it's kind of strange that we got everything else except for this one, so.
Thank you. Anyone from the public have any comment or questions about these appropriations? Seeing none, Counselor Rist?
I move the full council approve a supplemental appropriation of $4,701.68 to be transferred from free cash, $4,701.68, to be transferred to the FY22 Snow and Ice Salt Account, $4,701.68. This appropriation will fund payment of an outstanding invoice from Morton Salt that was not sent prior to the fiscal year FY22 closing.
We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $4,701.68 for an old bill from, from fiscal year 2022 from Road Salt. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any against it? Seeing none, motion passes. Counselor Rist?
We have a $65,000 request from the Department of Public Works to dispose of a backlog of street sweepings. Now, that may seem simple, but these street sweepings have to be tested for different items in the pile, such as old asphalt and toxic materials, and so they have to be tested, they have to be properly disposed of. There was a while in getting, I guess the state bid held us up on this or something?
Well, there was some discussion of the Pioneer Valley Plan Commission coming up with a regional solution and, and contract for disposing of street sweepings. But COVID hit, and it never came to fruition, our pile just got bigger. So, we were able to find a contractor that has the state pricing that did the testing for us, managed to get our, our debris approved to go to a landfill. I think it goes up to the central part of the state for landfill cover.
I think it's very important for the residents to understand, we can't just throw a pile of street sweepings into the landfill. They have to be tested. Toxic materials getting in the landfill would not be nice.
And a number of landfills around Western Massachusetts have closed over the past several, 10, 15, 20 years, so it's just, it's getting harder and harder to dispose of this stuff, so it's probably a cost that I could see increasing over the next several years.
Any councilor have any questions? Counselor Sarret?
From an ecological standpoint, is there any movement in the industry right now towards being able to reuse or to compost or to any of these materials in a way?
The characteristics of the debris that comes out of catchbait, the catchbasins or street sweepings with the oil that's in it, asphalt, it, you, any, you'd have to get a beneficial use determination from the Mass D P for any other cover to use it for, and nothing that we could use it in the city for, I guess, so.
Thank you.
Any other councilor? Anyone from the public have any question or comment about these appropriations? Seeing none, Counselor Rist?
I move that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation of $65,000 to be transferred from free cash, $65,000, to be transferred to the FY23 Highway Professional Services Account, $65,000, to provide funding for the disposal of a backlog of street sweepings that have been stockpiled at the Highway Department.
We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $65,000 for disposal of the street sweeping. Any further discussion? For those who are in favor, say aye. Anyone's against or abstained? Seeing none, motion passes. Counselor Rist?
We have a $22,500 request from the DPW. This is for the Emerald Place Slope Stabilization, and it's a 20% match as this, which includes staff time to have the work done. It matches a grant. Can you explain better than I, Greg, what Emerald Place Slope Stabilization is all about?
Sure. So, we're, what we're dealing with over Emerald Place is the sections of the sidewalk beginning to fall down towards the pond. That's kind of the simplest way to put it. And what we're working on now is starting a process with grant funding agencies of the state, the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs, similar to the process we use for Cherry Street to fund the improvements there. So, it starts in the planning stages, and then we'll move towards, towards an action grant. So, this, we had a planning grant awarded already that has helped us get to this point, and now we're working on, we were awarded an action grant to, you know, take a step further into design, so, for, for, so, you know, an engineered solution to keeping that slope up there, so Emerald Place can maintain, you know, a street that continues to slop off, we'll.
Any councilor have any questions? Seeing none, anyone from? Do you? Counselor Sarret?
I mean, obviously, obviously, it's obvious what this is important for, but is it, is it fair to say that this is also, this repair is an integral part as well as the reinvigoration and the quick actions that are occurring right now in New City?
Yeah, well, it'll all, it'll all become part of the New City, you know, improvements that we're making throughout the neighborhood. You know, we're looking at CDBG funding, we're applying for a CDBG funding grant to make some infrastructure improvements over there. So, there'll be a lot happening over there. Hopefully, we get some more grant funding awarded, and more and more happens over there over the next 10 years or so. I think improving Emerald Place is an integral part of that, as any more traffic, say we have to make it one way if the slope keeps getting bad, it's going to just push more traffic to Parsons and Ferry Street and, you know, exacerbate the problems that exist there, so it's good that we're getting out in front of this and getting it, hopefully getting closer to a solution for it. And this, this match funding will position us well for funding for construction when it comes around. I do think it's going to be an expensive project.
Any other councilor? Anyone from the public have any comment or questions about this appropriation? Seeing none, Counselor Rist?
I move that a supplemental appropriation be approved by the full council. The amount is $22,500 to be transferred from enterprise retained earnings, $22,500, to be transferred to the Emerald Place Resiliency Account, $22,500. Will provide, this appropriation provide grant match funding for the MVP Emerald Place Slope Stabilization Project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $22,500 for MVP Grant Match, Emerald Place Slope Stabilization Project. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against it? Anyone abstained? Seeing none, motion passes. Counselor Rist?
We have another supplemental appropriation of $100,000 from free cash for the DPW Fuel Account. DPW fuel all vehicles and some heating oil for the city, and we've gone through half the budget year, and prices have increased significantly, so they don't have enough money in that fuel account, and they hope this will finish the fuel account for the whole year. But it does fuel all the police cars, all the fire trucks, all the DPW vehicles and all the vehicles in town, plus some of our oil needs for some heating oil in some of our buildings.
Any councilor have any questions? Seeing none, anyone from the public have any comment or questions about these appropriations? Seeing none, Counselor Rist?
I move the full council approve a supplemental appropriation of $100,000 from free cash, $100,000, to be transferred to the DPW Fuel Account, $100,000. Will provide funding to overcome volatility in gas and diesel fuel pricing in FY2023.
We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation for $100,000 to supplement the DPW Fuel Account, gas and diesel. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone's against it? Anyone abstained? No, motion passes. Counselor Rist?
Last one is a $25,000 appropriation to hire a new custodian, building custodian, primarily for the Council on Aging and City Hall. It's a fully benefit position, and I'd let Greg explain how this new position will be used in conjunction with what we already have. Just so everybody knows, the DPW a few years ago was put in charge of all building operations. That's why he's dealing with this.
We have two full-time custodians on our staff to maintain the public safety complex. We have one that focuses most of his time on the public safety complex and does a quick sweep through this building in the morning to clean up the offices downstairs before staff is in them. And then the second custodian is spending half of his time at the Council on Aging and then working the afternoons here, so we have custodial coverage in the afternoon. The other custodian I mentioned works fairly early in the morning, about five, comes in about 5:00 AM, finishes his shift at 2:00, and that works out really well to get offices cleaned while, while they're vacant. But we also need custodial coverage while the building is open, say if a toilet overflows or we have a plumbing contractor working in the building, we need another set of hands around to help, help move projects along and do, and honestly, do a better job of taking care of our, taking care of our buildings. He is able to get a lot done over at the Council on Aging, and as these buildings get older, they're requiring more and more maintenance, so we don't want to end up in a position like we saw, like you see when a building, it's, isn't, isn't maintained, and it's going to cost a lot more than getting out there and, you know, doing what you can to be proactive, so.
Any councilor have any questions? Counselor Wright?
It's not a question, it's more a comment. So, I mean, look, obviously, every year that the budget comes around, you know, we look at the spreadsheets, we see, you know, who works for the city. But hearing you say this, right, and it is a reminder that if, that there are two folks who are keeping all of our buildings in the condition that they're in, and they're always in really well-maintained condition, so, you know, I, I would like for you to pass on my appreciation to those folks for doing the work that they do. I've, I've never seen a mess anywhere in any of these buildings. Everything always looks in fantastic shape.
Yeah, they do a great job, yeah.
It's unbelievable that, that they can do that much work across two people, because these are some pretty large buildings. I used to be a custodian when I first started, and I know how daunting it can be to walk into, I mean, especially the Public Safety Building is very large.
Yeah, and 24/7 operations, so it's hard to.
Right, yeah, exactly. So, you know, please pass on my appreciation and thanks for the work that they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilor? Anyone from the public have any comment or question about this appropriation? Seeing none, Counselor Rist?
I move that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation of $25,000 to be transferred from free cash, $25,000, to be transferred to building operations full-time, $25,000. The appropriation will provide funding to hire a full-time building custodian for the Council on Aging and City Hall.
We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $25,000 for full-time custodian. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Anyone abstain? No, motion passes.
Mr. President, I move the public in and speak closed.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion passes. Communication for elected officials, thank you, Greg. Communication for elected officials, board and committee, we have tonight a recognition of public safety contribution during the pandemic. Counselor Sarret?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is something I've been thinking about for a long time. I wasn't really sure when would be the appropriate time to say. I wasn't really sure when would be the appropriate time to say this. I don't know if now is the right time, but there's some extenuating circumstances. So I just wanted to make a brief, well, semi-brief statement. And I, I saw that the police were here earlier. I understand as they had to leave for a call, I know fire couldn't make it tonight. Some might be on the call remotely. I see our health director, Bree. So as I said, I'll try to make this brief. We have some business on the agenda later that made me pause to think about offering some thanks today. An opportunity to kill two birds with one stone or vaccinate two birds with one vial, I guess in this case. In either event, we're now three years into a viral pandemic that has substantially changed all of our lives. Just looking at this meeting, we are here in a hybrid format. We have colleagues in public who have to wear masks. We need to think about sticking swabs up our nose on a regular basis. We miss work at school, we suffer long-term effects and some of our loved ones have died. I want to recognize the work performed by our frontline public safety workers during this pandemic in my capacity as chair of public safety. This is not meant to exclude all the many people and groups who have been affected and contributed, our schools, our businesses, our seniors, just to name a few. It is also not to say that the pandemic is over. This is a pause to recognize. But our public safety personnel has had to day in and day out place themselves directly in the maelstrom of COVID. Our firefighters EMS with patients, our police with their work directly with the public, our health department with all the policy clinics and extra labor and board and, uh, board of health meetings on top of their already busy jobs. It can be thankless and as one member of public safety said to me regarding this suggestion of talking about this today, no thanks is needed, we're just doing our jobs. But that's the precise reason I want to say thanks because this task has been accepted without pause, without reservation and executed with the utmost of professionalism and care for the mission of your individual jobs. So thank you to our public safety departments for their work thus far in the pandemic, for the inconveniences, for the consequences of those dangers. Thank you for continuing to do this day in, day out. Now, part of the reason that I decided to speak about this today is the item on our agenda, but it's also because we're losing our health director, formerly Bree Ixtat, now Bree Supra Dupress. I personally have the privilege to work closely with her around COVID-related issues in the city as well as general health department initiatives and policy. Bree, see your icon there. Thank you for your service to the city, for your collegiality and for the impact you've had here. The dashboards information clinics provided during the pandemic have been top-notch and I know that comes from a fantastic spectacular team of people, not just you. And there's a lot more to say, but I won't say it tonight. And so many people, other people are recognized, there's probably going to be plenty of time to do that. But I just wanted to offer my thanks just far, thus far. We're not out of the woods yet, but you're all appreciated for your work. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you, Bree. Any other councilors have anything? Counselor Denham?
Yep, so late last year, President Gomez and I presented a resolution around education of, around reparations and we said that this would just be a beginning. And we've been working with some community members as well as with members from the C R C. And we're putting together, we've put together a discussion on March 27th at 6:00 P M to be held here. And it is with Dr. Ian Delahanti, who's an assistant professor of history at Springfield College. But the, the talk will be on slavery and emancipation in the Connecticut River Valley. And so here is an opportunity for folks to come out and be educated about the history of enslavement of Black and Indigenous individuals in, in this particular region. And so I strongly encourage folks to come and attend and it is also being supported by the mayor. So I want to thank her for that support. But again, strongly encourage people to use this as an opportunity to educate yourselves about the lived experience of Black people, Indigenous people, other people of color. So, yeah, I just want to make that announcement.
Thank you. Any other councilor? Seeing none, mayor's communication? Another mayor? Nothing? I don't have anything, you have something? Well, report for outstanding committee is finance, councilor arrest.
Thank you, Mr. President. We will again meet next Wednesday, March 8th at 5:15 in conference room one. It'll be a hybrid meeting. We have more appropriations from the Department of Public Works. We will also be dealing with the city space request as well as the library that evening. Anyone interested should come. I will have public speak at the beginning of the meeting, but given the nature of how many items will be on our agenda, that'll be brief. But yes, we will be dealing with all of those subjects and that is all, Mr. President.
Thank you, councilor. Public safety, councilor Zarrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. We were supposed to have a meeting last night for the police annual report and unfortunately that was derailed by Mother Nature. So I will need to reschedule that meeting. I'm not sure when. I'm hoping sometime in March because we're also anticipating on having a meeting on April 4th. That's a Tuesday at 6:00 P M for fire department to provide a report. So I will speak to the members of my committee and try to determine when in, in March we can, we can meet to reschedule that meeting. So I, I really don't have much to report. I'm just scanning here to make sure that I don't need to extend.
You have three.
Oh, well, well, thank you. Yes, I see them now. Thank you, Mr. President. So I do have three items I would like to request 90-day extensions for, those being the review of South slash Main Street four-way traffic light, review of use of electric speed monitoring signs and the New City Quick Actions, 90 days for each of those and the form of a motion. Second.
We have a motion and a seconds to extend those three items on the public safety agenda for 90-day extension. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those one in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone's against it? No, anyone's abstaining? No, motion passes, councilor Zarrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will reach, as, as indicated, I will reach out to the, so consider April 4th a meeting date and we will try to find something in March to get our police chief back in to discuss the, their annual report as well as a few other items that need to be tied up. Thus concludes.
Thank you, councilor. Appointments, councilor Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. The appointment committee met today at 5:00 P M to discuss two mayoral appointments. The first was Robert Ferris, who is being considered as an associate member of the zoning board of appeals with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2025. We met with Robert and discussed his credentials and connections to East Hampton. He is a trial attorney who has experience in zoning laws representing the city of Ludlow. He was also a resident of East Hampton for many years before going to law school and then recently moved back to East Hampton six months ago to start a family and wants to give back to the community. He spoke affectionately about the culture of East Hampton and wanting to do his part to help the city continue to flourish. The committee voted 2-0 to approve his appointment. And unless there are any further questions, I'll accept a motion to approve Robert Ferris to the zoning board of appeals as an associate member with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2025.
Second.
You making the motion or accepting the motion?
I'm accepting the motion.
You're making the motion.
Oh, you're making the motion.
Yeah, make it, yes. Thank you.
I will take that as a motion, I'll take that as a second.
I'll take a second.
We have a motion and a seconds to accept the appointment of Robert Ferry for the C B A associate member expiration term 12/31/2025. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those one in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone's against? I say no. Motion passes, councilor Riley.
And then also before the committee was the appointment of Nancy DiRocco to the commission on disability with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2024. Now, I did make multiple attempts to reach out to Nancy regarding her appointment. I was not able to make contact. There is a recognition, however, with several city committees and boards that accessing meetings and communication with public officials does have some inherent challenges for appointees. This, in my opinion, is not a reason to fault an appointee for not appearing. I mean, I, I don't know if the, the mayor would be comfortable providing any context behind the recommendation, if you would allow that.
Mother Mayor, do you want to add something about your appointment?
I don't think she wants to.
Mayor?
Just be truthful, I wasn't listening, Brad. So I'm around the appointment.
So specifically for Nancy DiRocco's appointment to the commission on disability. If you, just any kind of context or insight that would, you know, help inform the full council, thank you.
Yes, again, a person who has, she has a lot of experience in the disability community, including clinical access was a big point for her outside of just ADA accessible bathrooms, interested in the work that's going on and Union Street, but also what's coming on Main Street for accessibility and how that would go in with Sheroes and bike lanes, Sheroes, right? We have some now, yes. And, and how that would work. Thought it was a good match, given all the planning that, that's coming up. We also have finished a couple of months ago, probably six or seven months ago, a full ADA accessible plan for the city, which will open us up to additional money for the existing plan, for the existing projects, but also singular projects to ADA. So that was my, my thinking.
Okay, perfect. All right, so I guess if there are no questions, the committee did vote 2-0 to recommend Nancy DiRocco's appointment.
Councilor arrest.
Did you say Nancy had some difficulty with remote access to meetings?
I'm, I'm just saying, just in general, there are, there are some committees within our community that do have some inherent challenges. So just as an example, right, sometimes the council on aging, we see a lot of individuals who are elderly that have acts, difficulty reaching out to public officials. The Veterans Council, there are also a lot of disabilities at play that, that, you know, can interfere with this process. And then similarly with, you know, the, the commission on disability. So in these, in these situations, I, I tend to provide, you know, at least an understanding that, you know, the types of folks that are engaged in this type of work may also have some inherent challenges with accessing city hall or, you know, technology.
It's understood, but she's very valuable, so thank you.
Councilor Zarrett?
Thank you. And obviously, the, the mayor's putting this forward, I think speaks to the applicant. I, I acknowledge, I just want to reinforce, especially with the topic that we're discussing, that access to communications can sometimes be a challenge, especially in this time. It's a sort of a two-part question, but just to speak to the performance of the, of the candidate, have they been on any other town boards or committees before and been able to participate in, in meetings and such?
Not to my knowledge. I can't say one way or the other.
She was on the board of health.
It was, okay, perfect.
And, okay, that's, that's helpful. Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure I was informed.
There was two questions. There was only one.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, should I, can I retract one of them?
Any other councilor have any questions?
Okay, so then I will make a motion to approve Nancy DiRocco's appointment to the commission on disability with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconds for the appointment of Nancy DiRocco for the commission of disability. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those one, for those one in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is no one against it? No one abstaining? Motion passes, councilor Riley.
All right, and then there is no new business before the committee. A new appointment, for the appointment committee will be set when new business is before us. Thus concludes my report.
Thank you. Ordinance, councilor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance committee did meet on Tuesday, the 21st, I believe. And we were able to discuss the amendments to chapter seven, seven dash 17, the pay plan and looking at different positions. And you can see, looking at our agenda, that we have a public hearing except for March 15th on those. And we did vote those out of committee. You can also see that the vacant storefront ordinance is set for a public hearing on April 5th. I believe the, the final copy of that has been sent to the city clerk. And if anybody would like to review it, you can also reach out to me as well. We do have a meeting coming up on March 7th, 6:00 P M. We will be discussing the safe and fair access legally protected reproductive and gender-affirming healthcare services. There is some updated language that we will be looking at. And so that again is on March 7th at 6:00 P M. Don't believe I am delinquent on any of my timelines. So that being said, thus concludes.
Thank you. Nothing in property, rules in government, councilor arrest.
Yes, we had to cancel last week because unfortunately I was ill and already had two people on remote, so we didn't have a quorum. Therefore, we moved that meeting, last week's meeting, to tomorrow, March 2nd, where we will conclude, I hope, work on an ordinance to create a, a committee around the, it's called the B's Committee submitted by Councilor Zarrett. I hope to have that concluded as well as discuss especially the vacancy in office of the mayor part of the charter. I know we have a new business, but that'll be taken care of on March 9th, which we're, I will also schedule a new meeting, March 9th at 5:30 in conference room one. That'll be a regular hybrid meeting. Tomorrow's March 2nd meeting, will, I will be in conference room one. I'm hoping some of my colleagues can attend, but it is listed as remote. You can list something as remote and still be in person, but you can't do the opposite, which is why we had to cancel last week. If you were, if you said you were going to be hybrid, you can't suddenly make it remote. So that's why we had to cancel it. Anyway, that concludes.
Which one?
The B.
The B?
B City.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to extend the B City ordinance request for nine, 30 days.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconds to extend the item of the rules, government agenda for 30 days. Any further discussion? For those one in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is no one against? One abstaining? Motion passes. That concludes. No business, councilor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have some new business that is a request for immediate consideration, which is a resolution in support of establishing a COVID Memorial Day and I will turn it to Councilor Zarrett.
Thank you, Vice President Derby. We did have someone speak to this earlier. I don't have to repeat much of the items of the cover letter, but there are. This resolution was submitted with, through collaboration with the organization marked by COVID and in support of the, the Mass House Bill H D 3821 sponsored by Reps. Dom and Blaze and as indicated, our carrier scientist as well. This also would support a federal bill which is being sponsored by our senators, Markey and Warren.
I just want to ask before moving forward, if any councilor have any objections to voting tonight for this resolution? Seeing none?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to kind of make, make it relevant and introduce this. Obviously, as well, you know, again, three years into this pandemic, not knowing when this will quite end and with long-term ramifications, even when it is declared over, it is important to remember the lives lost as well as the trials and tribulations of the people still living through this. So with your permission, I, I can read this now? Okay. COVID-19 Victims and Survivors Memorial Day Resolution. Whereas the first Monday in March is an appropriate day to be designated as COVID-19 Victims and Survivors Memorial Day. And whereas COVID-19 SARS-CoV-2 is an illness caused by a virus that can transmit from person to person and has spread across the world, creating a global pandemic and having catastrophic effects on human life, our community and our economy. And whereas in March 2020, communities in every state and U S territories began to experience increased loss of life in families, lost parents, siblings, children, friends, neighbors from the virus. And whereas public health guidance and policies targeted at prevention such as social distancing, wearing masks in public and staying home helped mitigate the spread of COVID-19, prevent illness and lessen the burden of individuals on society. And whereas local, state, tribal and federal government entities and public servants took swift action to protect the health of the general public. swift action to protect the health of the general public and provided critical support to businesses, communities and the people of the United States, including US territories in need and whereas in response to rapid spread of COVID-19, its disruptions, essential workers stepped up to provide critical services to help protect our communities and save lives, sacrificing their own health and safety. And whereas COVID-19 has had a disproportionate impact on low-income communities and communities of color, rural and tribal communities, people with disabilities, people with weakened immune systems, unhoused individuals and those living in congregant settings such as long-term care facilities and prisons, exacerbating systemic inequities and social determinants of health. And whereas COVID-19 has had a devastating impact on the Native American community with Native Americans losing over six years of life expectancy and has caused the incalculable loss of elders who carried with them the community's cultures, languages and traditions. And whereas COVID-19 has harmed the health and well-being of veterans, especially those struggling with post-traumatic stress disorder because of the increased social isolation and disrupted access to mental health services and whereas COVID-19 has harmed the health and well-being of children by delaying access to care and health services, disrupting schooling, undermining their sense of safety and security, increasing stress on caregivers and by tragically robbing millions of children of a parent or caregiver. And whereas the symptoms and severity of COVID-19 can vary dramatically by individual and the long-term health implications for survivors are largely unknown, as many survivors suffer with post-acute sequelae, SARS-CoV-2 following infection, past. And whereas more than 6.85 million people worldwide and 1.12 million in the United States, including US territories, have lost their lives to COVID-19 and in Massachusetts alone, more than 23,000 lives have been lost to this deadly virus. And whereas each life lost to COVID-19 mattered and leaves a hole in the hearts of loved ones, family members and surrounding community. And whereas Massachusetts HD 3821 seeks to establish a statewide COVID-19 Remembrance Day on the first Monday of March and whereas similar efforts are underway on the federal level to create a national COVID-19 Day of Remembrance, now therefore be it resolved that on this day, March 1, 2023, the City Council of East Hampton, Massachusetts, recognize the first Monday of each March as COVID-19 Memorial Day in remembrance of those marked by COVID, those who have lost their lives and honor of those who continue to suffer from the impacts of this virus. Be it further resolved that the City Council urge our community to continue taking preventative measures as appropriate to protect vulnerable members of the community and to mitigate spread of this virus in tribute to essential workers and those who rose in service to protect the public. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to State Representative Dan Carey, State Senator John Veles, Congresswoman Richie Neal and State Senators Elizabeth Warren and Ed Markey. That is in the form of a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconds to approve the resolution in support of establishing a COVID Memorial Day. Any further discussion? Councilor Sarret?
I apologize. I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. President. You added some text to this that I think was, made it more, strengthened the language and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other councilor? Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Anyone abstain? Seeing none, motion passes. Councilor Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me get back to where I am. I believe what we have next is, oh yeah, there we go, and I'm there too.
Okay.
It's an administrative code number 23-01, a request to reduce membership on the CRC from 11 members to seven members. I move that that be sent to Rules Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconds to move to the Rules Committee, administrative code number 23-01, the request to reduce the membership of the CRC from 11 members to seven members. Any further discussion? Councilor Sarret?
I don't know if it's important to state for the public, but the council too, that with administrative codes, we have a certain, we have a finite amount of time to act on this or else it passes. So I just wanted to state that to the council as well as the public, just so everyone's aware.
Any other councilor? For those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No one against? Abstain? No motion passes? Councilor Rest?
Yes, we have two Finance Committee transfer and a supplemental appropriation. First is an interdepartmental transfer from the Community Preservation Act. The amount requested is $1,250,000 to be transferred from the Old Town Hall Second Floor Construction Retained City Match Account, $1,250,000, to be transferred to the Old Town Hall Second Floor Construction Project Account, $1,250,000, for construction of Phase 2, construction of new ADA accessible entrance and elevator. The second item is a supplemental appropriation from the cannabis, the amount requested is $510,000 to be transferred from the Cannabis Stabilization Account, $510,000, to be transferred to the Library, $510,000. The amount requested would be used for the following purpose, to jointly amend the existing memorandum of understanding between the city and the East Emily Williston Memorial Library to outline the use of the appropriation as services and not capital. I move that these two items be sent to the Finance Committee for review and both items be set for public hearing on March 15th.
We have a motion and a seconds to move these two items to the Finance Committee and to schedule a public hearing for March 15th at 6:15. These chambers, any further discussion?
No questions.
Councilor Denham?
Yeah, I just want to make sure the change in name doesn't impact anything logistically or...
That's a good question and we'll have that answered by the Finance Committee.
I think the Finance Committee should look into that and be ready for the public hearing.
Yep. Thank you. Any other councilor?
Did you say delay the public hearing?
For those, we have a motion and a second. For those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Anyone abstain? Seeing none, motion passes. Before taking the motion to adjourn, I will give it a couple of minutes to councilor Rest.
Forgive me if I get emotional on this. It's time. It has been my very great pleasure to serve the city of East Hampton and Precinct 5 as a city councillor for 27 years. I joined public service to give back to the village that helped me raise five beautiful children and now continues to provide for my grandchildren as well. I am proud to say that I feel in some way I have made a difference. However, I have reached the inevitable decision that I must retire from this esteemed body and announce today that I will not be seeking reelection this fall and December 31st, 2023 will mark my last day in office. Thank you all.
Thank you, councilor Rest. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. For those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.